Okay. I'd like to call our Board of Selectmen meeting, open it on this December 20th, 2023. Roll call, please.
You have it present?
Smith present.
Grantson present. And everybody that is able, the Fudge of Legions.
The Fudge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all so much. All right, now, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes if you've both read them. Make any changes that you needed to make?
Motion to approve the minutes from December 6th.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Smith aye.
Grantson aye. All right, moving right along. All right, first thing on our agenda, we have a request from the Board of Health to have town council check into the legality of the Board of Health regulation requiring deep observation holes. So we have this request. It's very lengthy, however, it's been boiled down to five specific questions that we want the legal team to address. Would you like to recap that? Because Mr. Lane, as always, you know I did not read any of this.
You have to look at the Board of Health meeting.
No?
Well, I don't intend to deliberate or discuss my questions that I submitted, so we're in the same.
Yeah, hang on, hang on.
Yeah, sorry.
We're not taking any votes from the Board of Health. We're not even, all we're doing right now is we're strictly deciding whether or not this board will send this to legal, per the request. That's it. We're not talking about the regulation. We're not talking about any of that. It's just we want legal to look at it, bottom line. And Richard knows whenever he sends me a lot of pages of stuff, I don't read it, so... Just kidding, Richard. I've read it. I just want to see how red you can get.
It's not hard to get me red, you know that.
John, did you read it?
I don't know what you're saying.
That's a flashback, sorry. Recap, very short.
Okay. So, Richard Lane, Tanglewood Road, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come tonight. But I do want to make it clear that although the Board of Health agreed at our meeting to have the regulation reviewed by council, I'm not here representing the Board of Health. I haven't discussed the questions, and I haven't deliberated the questions that I forwarded to you as a board. I don't intend to request or deliberate with the rest of the board. I'm here as a concerned official of the town, not to represent the Board of Health, but to represent the wishes of the voters. I believe you have my specific questions in your binders. I don't want to belabor the point. I believe you also have my original, very long explanatory document in there that I submitted when I was requesting this agenda item. So just to go over them quickly, the first question is probably the clearest indicator in my mind that this regulation was not legally enacted. Because, and the question is procedural in nature. The enabling statute for the boards of health has two requirements that must occur before the regulation is enacted. The first one is that a public hearing be held. That was done. The second requirement is, and I'll quote, states that, quote, "The local conditions which exist or reason," unquote, "for enacting the regulation must be stated," and this is important, "at the time of the hearing." That was never done. Now, some people may think that that's minutia, but this is the law, and this is what the law requires, and it wasn't done. As a matter of fact, the legal guidance for the Massachusetts Boards of Health, which we should always be referencing when we do something as a board, cautions boards that the failure to fulfill this obligation makes the regulation invalid. The next three questions that are put in front of you deal with the specific authority granted to local boards in the enabling statute, and where I believe the board exceeded or contradicted this authority. Places where it says that an owner may have an option to do something. They've removed the option and made it a requirement. Now, the DEP regulation says it is at the homeowner's option to do a deep observation hole test, and our regulation makes it a requirement. I also believe that the regulation disregards the specific intent of Title V. Title V intends, and it states, "The intent of 15.302 is to provide reasonable guidance for the inspection of existing systems in as non-intrusive manner as possible." A deep observation hole is the most intrusive manner. So we have contradicted, and actually, in my opinion, disregarded and gone against the intent of Title V. And the last question is really, it's a hypothetical, because the logic parallels my second question. So if the board would never do it in this case, why did they do it in the other case?
Explain what case you're talking about, Richard. I mean, I know, but I don't know the general public. You're talking about...
My time is being quick, but I could be very lengthy.
No, you're not going to do that. We have John Kilcoyne behind you.
I know, he's kicking me.
But what you're referencing is, if I sell my house to my kid, do we do the deep hole or do we still go by the old...
Actually, if your child takes title of your house, you don't have to do an inspection at all, according to the law. And what it says is, the law, the law says, "And inspection is not required." Okay, inspection is not required. But that's exactly what it says in Title V about a deep observation hole test. It says a deep observation hole test is not required. It's the exact same phrase. Why is it okay in one case, but immediately not okay in the other? That's why I asked that question as a hypothetical to the attorney. So, anything else more you'd like me to explain further? Because I did go over quickly, but I've been accused of being wordy.
Yeah. So I think what everybody has to understand is these are direct questions. They're asking us to let them go to the town council, and these are the direct questions. It's not really anything but that. It's five, six questions to town council, asking them if anything basically can be done. Kristen, do you have any questions for Mr. Lane?
I don't.
David?
I have none.
All right, so I would make a motion that we okay the Board of Health to move forward and solicit advice from the town council.
Second.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Smith aye.
Grantson aye. Okay, so we'll get those questions out to town council, see what they have to say, and of course, CC the Board of Health on this, even though it's coming from an individual.
Thank you.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Anything else, gentlemen? You're all set? Okay. All right, and now we have an appointment. We're going to move, my understanding is we're going to move Mr. Goethe from the Capitol Committee and right into Finance.
Would you like me to speak to it?
Yeah, make it quick, Joe. Are you done yet?
Good evening, Mark Warren. My name is Joseph King, Elliott Road. I'm a member of the Capitol Budget Committee, and I'm a member of the Finance Committee. We have an opening on the Capitol Budget Committee presently. Fortunately for us, Mr. Mark Goethe, who's on the Finance Committee already, has stepped up and volunteered to fill that position. At the November 21 Finance and Capitol Budget Joint Meeting, Mr. Goethe was nominated, and he was approved, so he has passed muster at the Capitol Budget Committee level. Although Mark couldn't be here tonight due to a personal commitment, the request tonight is that the Select Board support, approve, and appoint Mr. Goethe to the position on the Capitol Budget Committee.
It's also been recommended by the, for approval by the committee.
Any questions?
None.
No? I was told to see Mark come in in the first place, so moving him right along.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve, appoint Mark Goethe to the Capitol Budget Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Smith aye.
Grantson aye. All right, thanks, Joe. Yeah, it was all right. Getting ready for the next one. All right, next on our agenda is the Wachusett Regional Audit Advisors Board, and Mr. Kilcoyne is going to present.
Good evening. Lot of papers. John Kilcoyne, 90 Beeman Road. Thank you, Board, for allowing me a moment or three to just summarize a meeting we had last month about the Wachusett Regional High School. I have a 25-minute presentation, but knowing the audience, I think I will assume that you prefer like five minutes or less, so...
Well, we understand you have to be somewhere, so make it quicker.
I do have to be somewhere. I did provide some of the excerpts from the audit of June 30 of 2022, which was the most recent one, the regular financial statement audit, the single audit on grants awards, and the management letter. So we had a full committee meeting with the staff, superintendent, Michelle Grease, the business manager, et cetera. And just for the record, and I'll keep this brief, but I mean, on page six, I know the audience doesn't have it, I think you folks do, but it's really a picture of the balance sheet, and as before, you know, the biggest, it is in a deficiency position of $174 million, but the majority of that is due to the OPEB and pension reporting requirement, okay? And I say reporting versus funding, it's a big difference, and every time the state is grappling with it, so it really isn't as bleak as it looks. On the statement in that position, just again, so people understand what goes on sometimes, and it was a difficult year two years ago, and they're catching up now, and operationally they're much better. But for instance, operating grant and contributions decreased by $9 million from the prior year to June 30 of 2022. Assessments to members increased 2.3 million to 71 million from $68,700,000, so 3.4% increase. Doesn't sound too bad until we get to the general revenue, which Mr. Carlo was kind enough to provide me over the last five or six years. But again, you know, we hear all kinds of numbers and estimates and claims at town meeting, but in that year, administrative expense went down $500,000 from 3.9 million, 3.4 million. Instruction went down from 117 million to 102 million. Other school services did go up from $11 million to $13,800,000, and operations and maintenance went up from 9.4 million to 10.039 million. So again, the deficiency two years ago was $19 million. This past year was $12,864, but out of that, operationally, it was only 1.388 million. We factored out OPEB and the pension liability, the change in the pension liability. So not really, as I say, as bleak as it was. The statement in that position, I'm going to ask, now that I have time on my hands, I'm going to ask the administration to give me, grant me about half an hour to discuss that, because I think nobody really in the room understands this OPEB, the reporting versus the funding and requirements, et cetera. And that goes for the audit. They're all doing what they're supposed to do in reporting it, but I think it'd be nice to have a better explanation. On the management letter, again, I'm just going to get cut to the chase on the other two reports. The single audit was fine. The management letter, they basically got into pretty much the same couple of problems as the past year, but they are, the good news is they're starting to, they've resolved them, in the sense that they have 65 bank accounts, which means 65 cash accounts have to be reconciled every month, every year. That's unheard of. That's just over time. I don't know how it grew, but the recommendation in the management letter is to cut that down as much as possible, just to save time and maybe even save a position in doing it. It takes a lot of time. And that's what led to a lot of problems, because that was not being reconciled, and the budget was underestimated by almost $2 million, about 1 point, it was 1.2 or 3 million on payroll, and about $600,000 on operations the year before. And that's shown up in these numbers under the prior year encumbrance and the fund that they used to make it whole again. The second big account area was payroll. Payroll, again, because obviously it was under budgeted, they used the wrong formula calculation, and so they were short help. As you may remember, the superintendent retired, and three of the key people in administration resigned in the three months leading up to June of 2021. So, but again, the questions I asked, we got some good answers to. They're current through August of this year on cash reconciliations, which is great news. The payroll deficiency, the payroll position has been addressed, and they've hired somebody, and I think there, I don't think there's any major issues right now. The audit for the current year has begun, and hopefully in a couple of months, still have the records on June 30 of 2023. Payroll, net position, OPEB, operating, yeah, I think I've touched on, and so really, there was an over encumbrance in the current year, which again, when I say current, I mean the prior year, June of 2022, of like $196,000, which in a budget of that magnitude is very insignificant, and we're just, again, not monitoring the budget from month to month of so many accounts, but you're supposed to reconcile their, you know, we have transfers at the end of the year, they didn't do the transfers, they're over encumbered. So it really wasn't, on the operating side, it was much better than two years ago. So with that, the only other question, again, nobody had an answer to, was OPEB. They're struggling with a liability of $186 million. Pension is $26 million, but fortunately, it's not all due tomorrow. So they are getting the notes to the financial statements, they like us, and hopefully every town is finally on a pay-as-you-go thing with new people added, they are putting aside for the OPEB and the pension. Just to show, I mean, but the actuarial calculations are huge, I mean, they can make a huge difference. And this past year, and again, in the notes, because the discount rate went from like less than 2 to 3.15 or whatever, the balance in the OPEB went from $229 million in the prior year, you could take a few million here and there, down to $186 million. And that's purely on the discount rate change alone. So it's like a roller coaster, but really, it's required, was required, that's under Gatsby, I forget what year it was, and everyone's struggling with it, we're trying to get that down. It's not required by law to fund. I don't know if that'll change, but again, we'll have this argument come town meeting, I guarantee it, but depending on how the budget's going, but it is an obligation, we owe it, in my personal opinion, we owe it, and we should fund it as best we can, but can't say it's legal. So with that, I'm sorry I went over my, so a lot of, three and a half minutes, probably five, but I'll take any questions, and we have another meeting, it's quarterly, so we'll have another meeting, I'm guessing in February or March, and hopefully we'll have the final budget, or what is the budget increase request going to be? I really don't know, but I was told from a friend up there, they think 5%, which, kind of high, given the revenue increases that Bill has, what was it, Bill went up to like $116 million is the top line, and that went up over 6.5% I think last year, the prior year. So I don't know. I hope that's the high in the starting point, that they can whittle it down, but that's personal, as a taxpayer, and hopefully they, I mean, the operations are running much better, and hopefully they can find some cuts and bring that a little bit lower. But that's it.
John, you say the operations are running better? And they have caught up, you feel?
Cash reconciliation has, that should be reflected and verified in the current audit when it's done, because the management letter has the same deficient, they had a deficiency in internal control because of all that was going on with the lack of reconciliations, the payroll problems, and those have been addressed, we're told. It was told by Ms. Grease, and you know, she's been working hard on this thing, and the auditing manager said the same thing. They started their interim audit a few months ago, the final audit has begun November last month, and hopefully will be done by January, February, at the most, hopefully January. So it should address those. Hopefully those recurring management letter comments are gone in this next, in this next letter that's issued in the early part of next year.
Okay, because the 65 bank account thing was brought up last spring when we visited them, and taken aback by that, plus the cash, there was no, like if I wanted to buy a new pencil, you know, I'd just take a dollar out of the cash drawer instead of, and none of that was recorded or kept track of. We didn't do receipts and things like that, so it was a little, not a little, it was a lot out of hand.
Yeah, that's why the financial statement audit had a material weakness recorded, very rarely, so that's not an unqualified opinion, it's a qualified opinion. Not bad enough to disclaim it, because there's no fraud, or you know, they like that involved, but it was qualified opinion because of a couple of weaknesses in the cash, which is big, and the payroll, which was part of the cash. The other, little other things, which I guess we don't think of as too big, but for instance, in the food operations, okay? That's something that's, I can imagine the challenge of keeping that budget, I mean, reconciled every month, but best practices recommends that the amount in that revolving food and service account stays at no more than an average of the next three months, which was last year, that prior year, it was $650,000. On the statement in that position, I call it baloney, but it was listed at 1.5 and a half million, so way over what they need, and that was common. That was not a material weakness, but that was one of the recommendations, hey, get this under control, move that money from food and beverage into the general operating account where it can be used. And it shouldn't get that high, it's just unused money, and it's just sitting there. And so that's a kind of, but I think that, it was a mess two years ago, it was a real mess, so, and I will say, the auditing firm changed from Melanson to Markham at the same time this was all going on, a year ago, in April and May. So they had, you know, the Fox wasn't watching the hen house, nobody was watching the Fox and things, it just got out, but fortunately, I really, if there was fraud, we would have heard about it, it was just mistakes, big mistakes, because people were leaving, they were understaffed, they had to replace these people for months after they left, and the auditing firm wasn't there to even, you know, guide them. But now, and they decided to keep Markham, at least for the next, I think, three years, but usually they go out to bid, I was speaking, because they usually like to have a different auditor in place every five years. But in, you know, from a practical perspective, they do have a different audit firm, Markham is a different audit firm. They did retain a lot of the employees from Melanson, but they have a different partner overlooking it, and that's a lot. That really goes to, you know, independence in every audit, and I think they're getting that, which is why they decided to keep Markham. Usually you can rotate the auditors, but you don't, really, you don't want to rotate all the staff, the continuity is big too. So if they can keep key staff, maybe rotate the general manager on the account with a partner, they should be fine. So that was another thing that got kicked around, that was a minor issue compared to what they've gone through. But I think it's going in the right direction, but it's always the battle with the budget. I mean, so a lot of it's contractual health insurance, so many numbers that are just uncontrollable, but the ones they can control, hopefully they do, and maintain a lower level than five. And I'm just, that's a, that was, that's just a rumor, 5%, I'm hoping it's less, but that's...
Now, they'll come in at 6, whittle it down to 5, we'll say nothing, we'll say we'll do 3, and we'll end up at 4. Right, Joe?
That's the way it happens.
That's the way it happens.
One of the Select Board members was at a function the other day, I was out, and from Paxton, and my other colleague, Mark Love, who was on this committee, would be, and they don't, they don't, they're not going to go for any 5% or 6%, I can guarantee you that. I'm sure where Rutland sits, or the other towns, Princeton, but they're not, and not after the last five years, so...
Kristen, you have any questions for John?
No, just thank you for the update, and I'm glad to hear from you. It seems like things are getting better, and that was my hope with the new superintendent, that it would, so I continue to stay hopeful.
Well, thank you. Again, last year, we came in, they didn't even call us in for three, the first three quarterly meetings. We didn't go in until the fall meeting in like October of last year, only to see what presented, what the mess that it was. Darrell was gone, had gone, and Mr. Reedy was in, was in, not Reedy, but Riley, yeah, Reedy, Riley, well, anyway.
David?
Yeah, John, how concerned should we be with the deficit with OPEB? And is there a plan to try to get a handle on that deficit at some point?
They don't have, they didn't have an answer, they were grappling with just the everyday operations up there right now. So I don't know how much, if anything, they're going to fund. I like to think they are, they have been funding an OPEB account, but it just goes up and down. It's required, we have to pay it, but we're not required to fund it. So that's, so a lot of towns, according to John Jaskowicz, he's the managing partner with Markham on this, he said, a lot of towns, a lot of our clients are funding it and some aren't. And it's responsible, it's an obligation, and it does provide, the bonding agencies look at it, and they are inclined to give a better bond rate when we go out to, you know, finance some of these major projects. So if we're doing it, it lends itself to savings on the bond rate, which can be huge, depending upon the liability that we may incur for buildings or whatever else down the road, but it's not mandated.
So the school this year's got over 1,000 employees, so it's a little bit...
From Sterling, our liability's about 15 million, we have 1.2 or 3 in the account, we try and put something in there. The idea is, once it gets to that amount that your liability is, it will self-fund the retiree annual health insurance payments. So for the interim, you're paying both, but you know, at the end, I think there's only one...
This has been an argument or discussion for the last, oh, let's guess, nine, 10 years?
I remember. I think we're doing a pretty good job, from what I can gather, relative to a lot of the towns in our family. But the school, the school had started, but again, I don't know, I think they're just trying to get caught up with everything and then take a good look at how much they can fund to knock that down, but it's a big one for them, it's huge, you know? Glad we're not looking at that kind of a number, so...
Okay. Anything else, David?
Now, thank you. Merry Christmas to the board.
Hey, we're not done.
Oh, sorry.
God, why does anybody quit before I get to ask questions? I don't know, David. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Kilcoyne. Have a lovely Christmas.
Thank you, the board too, the staff too, and thank you for your work this past year.
Wait, Mr. King, you're about to yell. Wait, Mr. King, you'd like to yell at me?
I have a question. I attended the Biz and Finance Committee meeting in November, and Riley and Greece were there, and it was brought to the attention of the Biz and Finance Committee that policy states that there has to be a monthly financial statement presented. Was there any indication or discussion of that in your audit committee? That those were delinquent for every month of the fiscal year so far?
Yeah, it's supposed to be presented to that committee, the Business and Management Committee, regardless.
Correct, that's the policy, the written policy, that they do that, and they are not abiding by that policy. That shows low confidence on my part that they're back under control yet, John. I expected them to hit the beginning of the fiscal year this year, under control and being able to provide a monthly report, and that so far, none have materialized.
We'll contact Michelle Greece, just to see where it stands on that, because...
I contacted Riley.
They did?
No response.
Well, hopefully, again, as I say, August is still a few months ago, so they may not be caught up through November, which they should be, that may be the reason, but...
Well, the discussion was around, it doesn't have to be perfect, it just has to be a monthly report. And if every month, the accuracy of the monthly report gets better, that's going in the right direction. The fact of the matter was, no reports were being presented, and so we don't know more, I guess that's the bottom line still.
And maybe one of our quarterly meetings, the next one, that may come up. This one is dedicated really to reviewing the audit report and questioning the auditor there, and where it's going.
So since you're a committee member on that audit committee, I would request that you make a point of that, John, to bring it up.
I could even call Michelle, I have her contact info.
Yeah, she knows it because she was requested to provide.
Yeah. Michelle?
Joe, do you have the audit report?
I do not.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
At least we got it. I think it's accurate too, which is a good start. Again, two years ago was not pretty.
No. It's maybe not as ugly as it was two years ago, but it's still not in great shape, John.
I don't know, and they should be doing that, because that forces them to, really to keep everything reconciled before they present that to people.
Exactly.
Instead of presenting one, then changing it, you know, it's no good either. Okay. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Great job, great job to the staff too.
And we do have to discuss the Police Department bargaining request, but I see the conservation is here to discuss the restrictions on Osgood Road. Why don't we skip to that? Did you all have a chance to review this?
Yes.
All right. So I guess if you wanna do a little, presentation is exactly what you're looking for, we understand what you're looking for.
Okay.
But for the general public?
Sure.
And again, I don't know who you are.
So I'm gonna introduce myself.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm Mark Carrigan.
Okay.
I'm part of the Vigni family, and here representing the Vigni family limited partnership that owns the land. My uncle is 97, and it's been his lifelong dream to have this land conserved. He loves nature, he loves the animals. A number of years ago, he donated a bunch of land across the street also. In that case, he donated the land itself, the feet of the land to the Conservation Commission. This time, it's a little bit different. He wants to donate the conservation restriction so that it will currently, that going forward will be used for agriculture only. And then the Vigni family limited partnership will keep ownership of the land at this time. He may decide to donate it to the Conservation Commission later, but right now, he does not want to do that for various reasons. So the report that was given to, I believe it's 24 pages.
Yes, it is.
And if you've read it, it's, there's a lot in there, and I'm more than willing to answer questions for you, if you'd like, to the best I understand it. It's been accepted by the Conservation Commission.
They'll take anything, trust me.
Yeah, I know that, I learned that.
Now Land Trust Group too, they'll take whatever you give them.
Yeah, they're shady characters.
They are.
I love them, yeah.
Bye, John, thank you.
Thanks, John. So it's now waiting for your signatures, if you would so vote for it, and it's also needs to be signed by the DCS at the state. And for various reasons, he needs to get this done by the end of the year. So time is of the essence. So a few folks were kind enough to vote in favor of it tonight. We have a notary coming tonight, who could actually notarize your signatures tonight, so we can get it to the state as soon as possible.
Okay. I think we have some questions, Mr. Carrigan.
Sure.
Kristen?
I'm good, I don't have any questions.
How can you not have a question? Okay.
I've got everything.
I guess my question would be, who oversees these, this conservation restriction, if you will? I mean, is it the family that oversees it, or is it...
So no, that becomes the responsibility of the Conservation Commission at that point. So there's been a baseline study that's been done and completed, that the Conservation Commission will receive, that documents the state of the land as it is when it's given to you, and then they have the responsibility to make sure that whatever is in the restrictions isn't violated, and can go back and have the power to force either us as landowners of it, or whoever may lease the land going forward or whatever, to keep it in that state.
Are we taking it out of 61A?
No. So there's no, there's no change to the town as far as revenue, it's been in 61A for 50 years now, maybe, and it's gonna stay in 61A.
What are we doing up there as far as agriculture right now?
It's being haged today, and he'd like to have it maybe put to more productive use, but currently it's being haged.
Okay. My question is more, not just a question, but, you know, we have a lot of conservation land in town, between the DCR, the Land Trust, and conservation itself. And we're always looking for properties, you know, to do other things, you know, whether it be senior housing, or boll fields, or anything like that. And so my hesitation is more about, if we put this in conservation forever, that means we as a town, when it comes out of 61A, don't have the ability to have first bid on the property, you know what I mean? 61A, the town's supposed to have...
You have the right of first, if she is alive.
First we do. Right. And it's not just conservation, it's anybody, I mean, I could talk to, you know, maybe we want to put a new fire station up there, you know, you know what I mean? So that's my hesitation about taking another, this is another, what, 47 acres?
44.
44 acres, see, I read your stuff. But so, but I'm pretty sure I'm the only one in the room that has this concern right now, as far as a voting board. But as a town, I love conservation, I love hiking trails, I like the Land Trust, what they do, what people do to their own property as far as orchards or whatever, but it does concern me, concern me, that, you know, 40% is already DCR, and then how much do you have, Barbara, another 22? More than that? 37? 44? 100%? But anyway, that's my concern, and I don't think it's gonna impact what we do this evening, but I think I just wanted to put that out there. For anybody that's listening, that, you know, we are looking for properties for other, other things, and you're knocking us right out of the bidding at that point. The good news for you, Mr. Carrigan, and we have no money to buy your property anyway, whether you gave up the 61A at this point or not. So, that being said, I would entertain a motion to vote for and sign off, oh, yes, Mr. French?
I'd like to speak to it as well, if I may.
Well, we understand that you're probably gonna go in a very positive nature in this, and you're not gonna sway anybody's...
But I would like, yes, you're right, and I would like to, I would like to speak to a couple of the points that you made.
Sure. Mr. Carrigan, would you like Mr. French to speak?
Sure.
Jim, do you want to take the podium?
So I'm Jim French, 19 Johnson Road, and I'm affiliated with the Sterling Land Trust. So to get the percentages right, DCR controls about 28.9% of the town.
Maybe the whole conservation is for them.
And if you can include all other protected open space in town, you're at about 38%. So a little over a third of the town is protected, a third of the town is developed, in round numbers, and a third of the town has an uncertain future. We have a couple of thousand acres of farmland in town. We have a stated interest through our master plan to preserve agriculture as much as possible. And uniquely, about the land that Mr. Vigni would like to place a conservation restriction on, it is in its entirety made up of prime agricultural soils and prime forest land soils, and it's within the Ouachita watershed, and its protection will contribute to the protection of the water supply, of which the town wells are within the Ouachita watershed. So everyone benefits. We also had, through the American Farmland Trust, a study done a number of years ago in Sterling, which placed a $19 million economic impact positively for agricultural endeavors within the town of Sterling. So agriculture in Sterling is a pretty significant thing, and the protection of the Vigni property adds significantly to that effort to protect farmland. So to keep it out for other uses, whether it's for residential development or for municipal purposes, in my opinion, would be ill-advised. There would be, there would be other parts of land in town that would be more suitable for that kind of change of use than Mr. Vigni's property. So I would encourage...
Well, I understand that, Mr. French, it surprises me not at all. However, you know, and not to belabor the whole thing, you talk about agriculture and farmland, et cetera, and so on, I think you know well enough, as I do, that there's not a lot of people out there doing that.
Well, actually, it's a growing number of young people who want to get involved in agriculture.
I would like you to send me their names, please.
The average age of landowners in Massachusetts now that involves agricultural land is 59, but over half of them have people in line to take over after them, according to a recent report. And so the impetus on the part of young people who want to get involved in agriculture is actually growing, particularly with value-added kinds of agriculture, whether it's greenhouses or herbs, or...
Or grass.
Milk, or grass. The demand for local agricultural products is growing in leaps and bounds, and where there are all these concerns about the carbon footprint of our food and fiber sources, and the more local we can, we can contribute to the food and fiber demand...
That'd be great. It'd be great.
Better we are.
It actually works out.
So we need to protect the land base so that we can accommodate that.
Okay.
And so Mr. Vigni's wishes are to contribute to that.
Okay.
Have I got you convinced?
No. Because, as you know, I work at a place that we can't find anybody that's gonna come and take over, as far as that goes, and as the families diminish, I mean, what are your kids doing? You know, and I say, what are my kids doing? And, you know, because you do have that property, and you do have that farmland. We are way off course, we can have coffee someday, and we can talk a little bit more about it.
I don't phone to that.
You're not getting my 19 acres today. So I would entertain a motion, if Mr. French doesn't mind, to move this, move this question on the conservation restriction on Osgood Road forward.
So moved.
Same here.
All those in favor?
You and I.
Smith, I.
Krantz and I. So you say you have a notary?
She's here.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce Ashley Edwards, who was counsel for the Land Trust, and she has agreed to come here tonight as a notary to handle this paperwork as ASAP.
Do we have the paperwork? Okay. And do you have an ID?
Yep, I do.
Okay. Well, let's do it.
Bring it forward.
Night, Elaine.
Good night.
Good night, Elaine.
Well, just that you're, to prove that you're a notary, I think that's kinda important.
Well, I don't think I have my notary card, but I have my stamp that says I am.
That's a big stamp. All right, we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
You can send your bill to Mr. French.
Yeah, I will. Okay.
Thank you all very much.
All right, Mr. Carrigan, thank you. You might want your stamp.
Just saying.
Why not?
I think it would probably work better.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And moving along. Okay, the Police Department, you want to explain this one to us, Bill?
Sure, Police Administration has sent over the attached letter in your packet. Typically, when you guys go through a collective bargaining, included in there is a increase on the detail rate. The last collective bargaining agreement didn't include that. One of the things that they are looking at is trying to encourage people to do rates, details, and the rate is a little lower than most of our neighbors, somewhat significantly lower than some of the others. So this would be specifically for this one item, to open up a contract on, and I would imagine, if you're going to allow that to happen, that you would, one, vote for that, and two, appoint one of your members to serve with me on that negotiation.
Okay. Any questions, Kristen?
Nope.
David?
No questions.
Okay, and I don't have a problem with it, as you said, you know, we're a lot lower, and we apparently missed that in the last contract negotiations, as far as, you know, bringing that into the picture. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the impact bargaining request from the Police Department.
So moved.
All those in favor?
You and I.
Smith, I.
Okay. I would also nominate our friend David Smith to serve with Bill on that negotiations, yeah, with the contracts and stuff. He started that last year, so. All right. I don't think we have to take a vote on that, you're just gonna do it.
Yep.
All right, we appreciate that, whether you know it or not. All right. And Bill, you want to give us some updates?
As I've mentioned a couple times, we've submitted our expression of interest in the Municipal Vulnerability Plan Grant Portal, so the expression of interest is in. We've worked with a couple engineering firms to shore up what we're putting in there. So the MVP program folks will talk to us after the beginning of the new year, as the grant portal opens up for the actual expression, where they get some feedback for us as to how to better our applications, and also then put in our official application. I think I had mentioned, we are looking at Culver up in the area of Upper North Row, which comes out of the Haywood Reservoir, and it crosses over Upper North Row, which has been causing some flooding over the last couple major storms in years, and also the road out to the pump house on 140. Stream goes right by it, and anytime the river, with any major storm, floods that out, so that is pretty significant when you need to get things out to your pump house. Community Compact Grant, we're still working with the Collins Institute on the capital improvement plan for this fiscal year, the budget document for next year. Continuing on having our weekly check-ins with Ann Goby, the Director of Rural Policy. Most of it was checking in after the storm. Sterling weathered it significantly better than some of the areas in Massachusetts, and definitely outside of Massachusetts. At our next meeting, we will have a recommendation. Our Rec Director, Sherry, will be here for the RFP for the field study over on Muddy Pond and Fields behind the school. We did get two responses for what we're looking for to maximize that space. This came through in the legislation, but we got the summary of it today. There's new cannabis control regulations, which came in the fall, so we'll have to look at some of the host community agreement language that we do have. Some changes in the legislation financially, with special revenue funds being established, so we do have to check and see how that works out with the article that we passed on opioid fund last, but special town meeting. We still have to get that money into there from free cash, which is about $8,700 in any future funds, just figure out which one's easier to operate within. Special purpose stabilization funds, the required folk has changed in that from 2/3 to 50% plus 1. General stabilization still needs 2/3 at a special, at a town meeting. Things with insurance proceeds and amortization... Things with insurance proceeds and amortization of disaster debt changed some of those municipal finance rules. I know I've...
One second. Thanks all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Joyous holidays.
Happy holidays.
I know I have given you folks the update and the Finance Committee. Obviously, the budget request will be due after the new year, the end of the week. I know a couple boards, COAs, one of them, they have their board meeting the following week, so we'll get it after that. But the biggest drivers in there are the schools, insurance, Worcester Retirement. Where we land is going to depend a lot on those. I know we're looking at probably double digits on both sides of MIA, the property and insurance, health insurance side. Worcester County Retirement, we should be getting that in the next month or so. We get the MIA numbers at the annual meeting in January. And the schools, they're looking, probably no major new employee hires. They do have a budget retreat shortly after the new year with their finance team and committee. They're looking at a meeting with the towns, which I don't have the date right now, similar to what we did last year. And then they're looking for a budget, final budget to vote at the beginning of March. We have the early town meeting, so they've kind of got to follow our schedule to see where we are. As for Monty Tech, don't really have an idea on them, but I can follow up and see there. Two thoughts on shared services. The Conservation Commission, our agent, is leaving for a full-time benefited position in another community. This is now the second time that's happened. So I have talked to a couple towns around of if it's possible to share, to make it full-time, and how that would work. I think currently Rutland is one of them. I know I spoke to Berlin the other day, but theirs doesn't seem like it's going to be possible. But to be able to keep somebody long-term, I think that might be the way we have to go to get it to full-time for a person and a benefited position. The second one would be the potential of looking to a larger group of towns for a building commissioner and a local inspector. There are a lot of commissioners that are nearing retirement. It's not an easy license to get in the Commonwealth or anywhere. Requires about a five-year period and a lot of exams and whatnot. So trying to look at a larger one, which would allow some succession planning, shared services, and maybe some better coverage throughout three or four towns. When I have a little bit better information, I will report back on that. But I'm hoping that we may be able to do something on the conservation side sooner than later, so we can get that position posted.
Yes, Steve was a little concerned about her being gone because there are a couple of things she's working on.
Yeah. I updated on the school security. We did receive the quotes, "American Alarm Was the Awarded Bidder." I got to get an update from the school facilities manager on where that stands. We are still working. I contacted or was working with another company today, Ryan and I, on the storage building, which we were planning on putting behind the police department. Working on getting some of the trees down at the beach. Still getting the 1835 septic attached to the fire department, Leach Field. There is a new owner of 27 Main Street, as I mentioned a couple months ago. We did meet with them a couple, a few weeks ago, I think just before Thanksgiving. So at least he is aware. We did the easement documents and sent it off to one owner. Hadn't heard anything back. And we did do the appraisal for eminent domain of the third. We did get the contract extension for, or through June of 2024 for Maple Street sidewalks and Bird Street sidewalks under the Complete Streets Program. So I think that is about it for me. Obviously, the building will be closed here on the next two Mondays because of the holidays. Right? Yeah?
Yep, they're on.
I don't know what any holidays are anymore.
I know. All right, okay, so, well, Christmas Eve is Sunday, so Monday's Christmas, and then New Year's Eve. Okay. All right, and then Friday, you're done at normal time.
Yeah.
Kristen?
How many, was Brianna at 30 hours or was it less?
19.
19.
It becomes a benefited position at 20.
So we have, as a town, diligently worked at keeping people at 19. So, you know, they move on to full-done jobs somewhere else. Anything else?
Nope.
David?
That was my question. So I'm good?
Wow, great minds think.
And that's the rule for MIA. If we were in a different health insurance, I know a couple of them are 18.75 hours, so it fluctuates depending on what they determine as benefit-eligible.
Sorry. So, anything from you, comma? Joe?
A question for Mr. Colville. On the 1835 subject line, do you have an ETA at this point in time when that might happen?
No.
It came up at the Board of Health meeting.
I saw it, yeah.
Saw the video.
I tried giving David the information during the meeting, but he didn't have his phone with him, so.
Because evidently, that's been a lot of years in the works. And still a lot of years.
20?
20?
As long as the downtown project?
Not quite that long, but it's been a long time. You know, I mean, the whole thing was trying to get the building to a certain point. But you figure, when they put in that system over behind the fire station, which was eons ago, that was always the plan. So, just...
Finally asked to, you know, sort of take that entire discussion off the table. If that is satisfied, then...
No, we've got all the legal things. We've got the money approved, depending on if it's enough, hopefully. But obviously, the easement piece is in those that are working with us court. And we've done the appraisal for the eminent domain on the third one.
Okay. We'll continue to wait, then.
Yeah, we might live to see it, Joe, who knows?
How was that project getting from?
There was an article a handful of years ago. Several years, yeah.
About 100 years ago.
20 years, I think.
I seriously don't know how long the discussion is going. It's like the whole 1835 took forever. I'm sure it's in those reports from the 1835, which was years ago. Before I was on the board, so.
The majority of the interior projects are pretty much complete.
Right.
They're still working on the drop ceiling downstairs, which is one of the last ones. We'll look at what we can do for, you know, audio system upstairs when we get there. But I know we want to do an ADA bathroom, which will probably apply for the ADA grant at some point. I know it did a couple of years ago, that got rejected. But we'll probably circle back to that one.
Yeah. Long time.
Takes a long time.
All right. All right, next agenda, I would like to add something as far as the ZBA and the Garubi, so the truck. They want her to come to a meeting, a zoning board meeting, and, you know, spend about $1,000 or better. And I want to talk about the why and maybe waiving those fees. She's been there for almost 100 years. And walk forward. I know you've contacted her. Yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
And I was told that because when they agreed to it, they put a two-year limit.
Right.
Now what they want to do is have them come in. And as I understand, it costs $100, but then it would be forever unless they sold it.
It costs $400 for the meeting. It's the postage that they have to send out to everybody. How much does it cost for a stamp nowadays? 50 cents, probably? What?
65, 64?
Really?
Yeah, stuff's not cheap.
Apparently not. It's that glue. Anyway, so that's the question. And is that necessary in that been there that long? Yes. Can you put some restrictions on it? Maybe. But I think that it's something that we get more information and share with the rest of the board, and then talk about asking, waiving of fees. Because they don't have to, they have to, they can't just contact the condo association. They have to do everybody in the condos. Never mind everybody else around, so. It's pricey. I looked at it. Stamps are that high?
Holy God, lady.
That's why you buy forever stamps. Anyway, okay. Anything else?